I'll call this regular council meeting in the village of Grammont and order at 7:30 PM. With us for prayer this evening is Michelle from the Lighthouse Church.
Let's pray. God, we just thank you for today and Father, we just thank you for just another opportunity to gather together, Lord, and just as things are being discussed and matters are being discussed, Lord, would you just be with each leader here? Give them peace, give them wisdom, and yeah, unity, Father. So, Lord, we just thank you for all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. I just have a couple of things I want to say for opening remarks. Mostly, I just want to highlight three volunteer organizations here on the island that over the past month have done a couple of things that I think are worth highlighting. The first one is the Grammont and Animal Welfare League. They had their spay and neuter clinic earlier this month. They looked after forty-six cats and they were very pleased they had some new volunteers show up, which I think for them was very encouraging to see some new people come in the door to help out as well. So, that was good news from them. On the same theme, Action Ministries had their annual meeting a couple of weeks ago. They had, over the past year, a lot of new people stepped into some leadership roles. And they do a lot of things in this community that are out front when you see the Food Bank and Thrifties, but they do a lot of other things that people aren't aware of. So, it's really great to see people stepping into that organization, taking on those roles for another generation. And then finally, on Saturday night, I had the opportunity to go to Rotary's Charter Dinner, I guess it was. They honored five individuals in the community who have gone above and beyond for service. It was very cool because most of them didn't know they were getting the award. But in sitting at the head table, I also couldn't pick out of the room who was more deserving than others because there were so many people in that room that volunteer and serve the community. So, I just think we're very fortunate to have those groups and to have as many volunteers as we do on a small island like this. So, I just wanted to give them all a shout out for this month. So, with that, we will move on to the disclosure of conflict of interest. Hearing none, I'll be looking for a motion to adopt the minutes of the regular council meeting of April eighth. Heard the motion from Counselor Boyd. Do we have a second or? Seconded by Counselor Kareem Law. Question. All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Under additions to the agenda, I have one removal, the Grammont and Library presentation. We're going to defer that for another month. And we had a letter come in from the Heart and Stroke Foundation looking for a donation. If we could add that under, I guess, underneath business, which would be fourteen-five. If someone would like to move those changes.
I'm making a motion to move those changes.
You heard the motion from Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Do we have a second or? Seconded by Counselor Toll. Question. All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Up next is the RCMP report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Counselors. I feel like it's been a little while since I've had the opportunity to be here with you, so I'm pleased to be able to be here and present the RCMP report tonight. Looking back over the month of April, last year, we had sixty investigations on the go over files, complaints. And this year, April, we had thirty-five. So, I'm not sure exactly why the smaller file count, but I did compare, look back and compare how many files that we actually laid charges on, criminal code charges. And in both years, there were actually the same amount. We had four investigation that resulted in criminal charges, both last April and this April. This year, they were some larger files that took a little bit more work. Sometimes, or a lot of investigations that we have might result in one charge or something like that, whether it be a shoplifting or theft, things of that nature. But other times, when we have an investigation, it ends up in multiple charges. And that was kind of the case on all these files this April. Just have a little bit of a breakdown of those charges that we're recommending. There was one investigation for assault on police that included another charge of failing to comply with release conditions. One investigation for assault that also had unlawfuling in a dwelling house charge. An assault with a weapon or causing bodily harm investigation, and that has two people that we're recommending charges against and also another charge of theft along with it. And then we also had an investigation for possession of a controlled substance for the purpose of trafficking, and which included also possession of stolen property. Again, two people that we're recommending charges on that as well. So, that being said, even though our file count is down, there still was a lot of good police work going on in the month of April. And breaking down the files overall, we had four assault or violent crime-related investigations, two for break and enter, two for mental health, one was a well-being check, two for mischief, damaging property, one was theft, two missing persons that were located fairly quickly, one possession of controlled substance, and one uttering threat, and eleven traffic-related complaints. I also wanted to just kind of put a reminder out there on a few things. One thing is, we're still noticing a few green stickers or inspections for, that would be twenty-twenty-two. Also, still seeing quite a few blue stickers on people's plates or inspections. So, please, for everyone out there, have a look at your vehicle the next time you go to get in and see if you need to do something with that because if you get pulled over, we're into May already, you might be getting a ticket for that. We also have, I wanted to make a reminder as well, now that the weather's getting really nice, starting to see some tourists here, you're going to probably see a lot more people walking and biking on the road. So, the public should be mindful of that. If you're coming up on somebody on a bike, please slow down, make sure you're moving over for them. And I noticed there were some complaints last year about traffic and bikes. And one thing that I kind of picked up on or noticed is if you're coming up behind somebody on a bike, you really need to, rather than just pulling out and assuming that the oncoming traffic is going to move over or yield for you, please don't just assume that. Slow down and wait. If the vehicle moves over and there's enough room for you to safely pass, go ahead. Otherwise, you need to wait until the lane is clear and go ahead. I also wanted to mention, there is some turnover at the detachment right now, as you've seen. We do have Constable Keith Garbit. He joined us from Manitoba. He was our replacement for Stephanie DeWitt. And we also have Constable Rachel Alexander here replacing Mark Wright, and she's coming from Oremuckto. Both are settling in quite well and getting engaged in island activities. And just also wanted to mention as well, because Constable Wright mentioned at the last council meeting, I am going to be transferring out sometime this summer. My replacement hasn't been identified, or has, sorry, my replacement has been identified, but I'm not going to mention any names yet because final paperwork isn't done. And so, I don't want to misspeak or in case anything changes with that. But right now, we're not anticipating much of a gap between when I leave and when the new corporal will get here. That's my comments for tonight. If there's any questions, I'll gladly take them.
Questions?
There's a recent story online or in the paper about violent crimes in New Brunswick taking a spike. Is that relevant here or are we pretty flat on the violent ones?
I'd have to look back to see if there's any kind of trend with that, if it's going up or not. Certainly, kind of noted tonight for the April files, most of them all were, you know, a couple of them were assault-related. I wouldn't say that I'm noticing that it's growing here without looking at the numbers though, but I can certainly take a look and maybe include that for the next meeting. Maybe look back at the last year and see if the numbers were increasing or not on that.
Counselor Layden?
Well, I just want to give you a compliment, I think. You're well-deserved. You've done some good police work lately and high visibility, and I appreciate what you guys have done.
Thank you very much. I do very well put it as a whole team effort on that for all of these investigations that are going on right now and the work being done. I appreciate my whole team. I think they're doing a great job.
All right. I would echo Counselor Layden's comments. It feels a little bit like the goodbye parade every time one of you guys comes in here lately. But it has been a pleasure having you and your family here, and we are going to miss you. So, come back and visit.
Thank you. Will.
All right. Thank you. All right. Under Old Business, Counselor Travel Expenses Allowances, Treasurer Alyssa Calder to discuss.
Okay, I passed out a form for the meeting. I think everybody got one. We were just asked to get some rates, what other municipalities were paying for their mileage and for their meal allowance per day. So, does everyone have their, it's pretty, most people are following the same thing. I don't know if you guys wanted, if you had any questions about that or if you wanted to discuss what we discussed last time at our meeting.
What's the provincial, Alyssa? Is that the CRA rate minus five?
I think it's fifty-nine. And so, minus five is what we're paying is fifty-four.
Right. Because the, so the federal must be the CRA rate minus five.
Federal's, yeah.
Yeah. Because that just bumped up. CRA rate's seventy cents now this year for twenty-twenty-four. I only know that rate off because I filled out a UMB expense report this weekend, so.
I didn't get anything back from them when I asked.
Because we're at sixty-five cents now there for mileage.
New Brunswick, it says fifty-seven point five right now is what it is for mileage, yeah. So, most of these places require receipts, but some of them just have a set amount for meals. I don't know if that's something you guys want to talk about, not passing those in like just for your, and some people that don't require receipts for meals have to have them for like parking and other things like that, like ferry.
Questions, Counselor Sturgeon? I see you leaned forward.
Some municipalities as well, I've talked to a few over the years. And what they do is that they allow each counselor a certain amount to travel on and things like that. So, much a day, for example, for, you know, so they would allow for maybe sixty dollars a day for meals or seventy-five.
Yes, yep. Some of them just have a.
You know, and so, if you want to have thirty-dollar breakfast, that was up to you. But if you want to, but if you wanted a fifteen-dollar supper, that was up to you as well, but you know, so.
Yeah, exactly. So, what we're paying isn't too far off from what they're actually, like we pay ten-seventy-five for breakfast, some pay twelve. I mean, you really can't get anything for ten-seventy-five on the ferry when you're going away.
Madam Mayor, I was kind of wondering myself if, you know, I appreciate what the staff has provided here for us there to see what others are doing. Maybe we would take time to digest it, maybe table it for another month and make a decision from there.
Is that a motion?
I would make that a motion, Madam Mayor.
Do we have a second or? Seconded by Counselor Boyd. Question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Is there any questions on this though before we come back to it in a month's time, just for people to think about? Because we kind of veered into the motion very quickly. Okay. Hearing none, we will move on to delegation. And first up is Village Car Share Eastern Charlotte Waterways. And we're just going to take a thirty-second timeout and hope the technology works.
So, here we go. Okay. Before I start my presentation, I would like to thank the group and the counselors for giving me this opportunity to present to you Project Village Car Shares. So, my objective tonight is to announce the official launch of this service in Grammont and and to walk you through some important information that you need to know about how this service will work in your community. So, let's begin. So, here are the points that we're going to share with you, car share service in Grammont, how car share works, and other service details, membership and service rate, important reminders for car share members. So, here are basically the provisions of the car share service in Grammont. So, we have the car share zone in the island, and it is located at the coastal transport ticket booth, just by the side of the ticket booth on the roadside. We have one electric vehicle available for the community, and there's the EV charger by the coastal transport ticket booth. So, the EV charging port is actually speaking out of that facility, and it's available by the side of the actual ticket booth. So, you'll see it on the parking space when there's a port there that you can charge the electric vehicle after use. So, how car share works, first, you register with us, and there's a couple of requirements that you'll need from our applicants. And once you are a member of the program, we'll set you up with a mobile application where you can book your trips online. And then, once you're a member, you book your trips online, you just go to the location of the vehicle on the time of your trip, and then you drive out yourself. You basically use the vehicle for yourself. Program requirement, you require applicants to be at least twenty-one years of D H. And they must have a classified driver's license or any equivalent Canadian or foreign driver's license. We also need criminal record check, specifically the name-based check. And this is available through your local RCMP in St. George. So, I'm not sure really how the RCMP works in Grammont and, but the nearest RCMP that issues criminal record checks is the one in St. George. So, if you're interested to sign up for this service, you can sign up online through our website at projectvillage.ca. There's a big sign-up button in there, and if you click that not, it will lead you to an online form where you can input all your information. And then, once you submit an online form, you will submit to us on a separate email the copy of your classified driver's license and the criminal record check. So, we have here the membership and service rate. So, we have different membership types, but I want to direct your attention to the community membership plan. So, the membership for a community member is eighteen dollars per month. And we have a damage protection plan that ranges from five dollars to ten dollars. So, specifically, it's five dollars, eight dollars, and ten dollars. So, this damage protection plan is just basically cost protection for any event of accident at fault or not. We also have one-time registration fee, so when you are a successful member, we'll charge you twelve dollars. And that is for the payment for the access card that we will issue, we will issue you once you are successful. The service rate of the vehicle is twelve cents per minute. So, how this membership and service rate works is that per month, you will be charged with membership fee and damage protection fund, and then that is plus tax. And then, every use of the vehicle, you'll have a service rate of twelve cents per minute. So, I'm not sure how much of our members know about the car share, but some of our car share services in St. Anthony's, we have the base rate, but that base rate will not apply for the car in Grammont. We have here a little piece, and these are regulatory pieces that we have. So, we have cancellation fee, so eight dollars for cancel booking. If you're late, that's eight dollars per thirty minutes. Every thirty minutes that you're late is seventeen dollars. We also have low battery fee for the one in St. Anthony's. But the low battery fee is not going to be applicable for the car share in Grammont, and it is because there's a lack of commercial charging stations in the community. So, the charging station that we have from coastal transport is just an outlet of the building. So, we have an EV port there. And for you to charge an electric vehicle on a residential outlet setup, it's going to take overnight to have it full charged. So, this is why we would like, we would say before the reminders, but we encourage people who are using the car share that every time that you use the vehicle, you leave it charging, connected to the charging port that the coastal transport is out. So, how to use a car share if now you're a member? So, first, you book your rights online. We'll set you up with a survey mobile app where it's just basically putting, like you're booking a hotel room, your start date and your end date and the time. And then, you use your access card to access the vehicle. You drive yourself out, and then you just return the vehicle to the original car share zone to the parking area. So, important reminders for the car share users, always do a field check of the vehicle just to make sure that there are no damages to your trip. The vehicle has an emergency guide inside. There's a glove compartment there with an emergency guide document. If you need towing assistance, there is a list of towing companies in there to get contact. And in case of emergency, always contact us by customer service, and we're available on weekdays from eight-thirty AM to one PM. So, it is the user's responsibility to charge the electric vehicle during your trip. You can also use the EV power's website to look for the chargers near you during your trip, during the road. You can use the EV power lever. An E-charged card is provided for users to access the EV power charging stations. ECW do not cover fees for charging the electric vehicles using a different charging station. So, should you decide to use a different charging station, you might be the one covered for the charge. You should lock the doors after plugging the EV to charge. When the user, when the user returns the vehicle, returns the vehicle in Grammont, they must connect the electric vehicle to the charging port beside the coastal transport vehicle. And you can leave the electric vehicle plugged in and charging at this charging station. So, when you return the vehicle, always plug it and leave it charged. So, we will make sure that it's always a hundred percent in charge when other people use the vehicle. For more information, we have our website at projectvillage.ca/pbcarshare. You can also contact us via phone, and you can email us at carshare@projectvillage.ca. I just wanted to highlight that our website has a lot of information. And one of the things that I like about the website is the how-to videos. So, if you can see this sliding here, you'll see there's a how-to video in there. So, I know a lot of us, including myself, I don't want to be long manuals. So, if you're a visual learner or if you're already on the road using the car, the electric vehicles, you can just click on the how-to videos, like for example, how to start the electric vehicle, how to charge the electric vehicle, how can I check my battery percentage. It's all in there. You just click and watch how it's done, and you're good to go with your electric vehicle. So, if you have any questions, you can always contact us. And once again, your workshops and counselors, thank you for your time and for this opportunity.
Thank you. Any questions? I do have one question, Rose. I noticed that we had a user from Grammont that was highlighted on your Facebook page here a few weeks ago. And we had very low usage, I guess, maybe to start. Are we seeing an uptick in usage of the car over the last few months? Have people gotten used to using it or is it still relatively low?
Oh, it's still low. Pretty much, we're still in the stage of introducing this service in Grammont. It's very unique. So, Grammont is a rural place, but not just a rural place, you're an island. And I think there's some strength into it. But we're still, this is actually the first time that we officially introduced the Grammont service, the car share in Grammont. So, maybe it's also contributed to that, that we haven't really officially, you know, made a announcement of it, that we're not seeing any more and much uptake with it. But now that we have the opportunity to connect with your residents in there, I know that it will fly from this point. But what's interesting, what's more interesting is that I think people are attracted to the, how we model our service rate because our residents from Grammont take the ferry to actually access the mainland. And most of the people, we have, I think, we have one user from Grammont, and she takes it to go to the mainland for some appointment. And I think that is, that the twelve cents per minute is really attractive, you know, very useful for them to use our service.
Thanks. Anyone else?
Not so much a question for Rose. More information for counsel. As Rose mentioned, part of the problem we have on the island is the lack of the infrastructure for the charging. Part of the Rural Transit Solution Fund that supplied all these vehicles for Charlotte County also supplied funding for Level Three DC Fast Chargers. So, we were actually granted money to install one of those Level Three Fast Chargers on Grammont, and it came in with a value of about eighty-five thousand dollars for that one charger. So, I'm in the pro, but the catch is, we have to have it installed. So, I'm in the process of having electrician quote on what it would cost to have that installed. So, once I get that information from the electrician, I'll present that to counsel to see whether or not we want to proceed with having that installed.
Actually, a very good use. I'm sorry, are you asking me something or is it just for information? I did not hear the last part.
No, Rose, that was just information for counsel.
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Rose. Appreciate you taking time out this evening to update us on the car share. I think it's, I think it's a good opportunity for the island, and hopefully we'll see an uptick in usage. So, thanks for, thanks for that this evening.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so up next, we have another delegation to talk about Fishhead and private access roads, so.
Good evening, everyone. It is a pleasure to be in this room again. Been a long time since the Tourism Association met here, and it was always pleasant to be with the community and enjoying everyone. And fun to see all these new faces here that I have lost track with. So, for those who don't know, I am Kay Small. I have the property at Forty-two Old Airport Road. And as we're aware, there's municipal, local government and provincial government criteria that have an impact on how land is transferred, developed, and used. And rather than investing in something and then all of a sudden discovering that everything's in the wrong place, and then we come to you people with great animosity because, you know, you did it wrong and we did it right. So, what we're here this evening for is to try to get a few answers so that whatever we move forward with, we're within the current criteria of twenty-twenty-four. So, Karen, my daughter, will do the techie presentation. Andrew Small, my son, is here to answer questions. So, thank you.
So, I'll say thanks to Madam Mayor and the counselors as well. And my brother is the techie, so he taught me to do Ctrl-L, you change the notes. You should be doing the presentation, but anyway. Last week, I sent a presentation to everyone, and then over the weekend, after I presented it a number of times to family and friends, it's far more concise than what you guys got, and I think I saw as me circulated here today. There was a cover letter that went with the note last week. And so, we've spoken to our surveyor, we've spoken to Judy at Southwest Planning Commission. And because of our discussion with Chris, he invited us to come and present to you this evening, so that's why we're here. So, let's start. We're going to start with what Kay has now. This is an overview of obviously Castelia and North Head. And Kay's property is a portion of Fishhead. The next slide will have a little more detail. So, there's a lot going on here, but Kay owns about two-hundred-and-fifty acres. And what I'll do with each slide is show you the reference point. Down here is Old Airport Road. That's publicly owned, and we have publicly owned Durant Drive. So, her property is the white border, the western border here and the southern, for two-hundred-and-fifty acres. And in the midst of this, she has existing privately-owned roads. I see this as light blue. Someone might see it as light green. But it's the extension of Old Airport Road, past the houses, past the park north, heads towards the parking area to hike to the hole in the wall, take another road to the Fishhead Deck, another road to the Bullzetti Deck. And of course, these roads provide access to the hikers that come and wish to have quick access to the hole in the wall instead of. instead of starting a swallowtail. Boss Way, we call it Boss Way, was created, it starts and ends with two privately owned roads, Old Airport Road and down to Durant Drive. The purpose of that road is for a lot of the traffic to bypass the park and the houses in the summer. They're just run too close, too fast, too much, so Boss Way was constructed. And Durant Drive is publicly owned until this part, around the Gilmore's northern section of their property. And privately owned Durant Drive is three-hundred-and-fifteen meters. So that's a subdivision as it stands right now. So our ask is this. We are requesting approval of private access road variances to proceed with future development. Current regulations permit a private access road with a maximum length of three-hundred-and-sixty-five meters, beginning from a public road. The road must have either a cul-de-sac or two points of egress. We are proposing longer private roads with two points of egress that exceed the three-hundred-and-sixty-five meter length and therefore require a variance. So this is where your advice and input are welcome. I just want to do a little background on the three-sixty-five and what we've learned from Judy at the Southwest Planning Commission. This is a new policy in the province in the last six months. As a result of the Nova Scotia wildfires that occurred last year, a number of properties and landowners were basically islands in the midst of a fire. An emergency vehicle could not get to them or could not get out because they didn't have two points of egress or a cul-de-sac. So when we were ready to do some property development last year and talked to Judy, she's like, no, we've changed the rules a bit and this is what you have to abide by. So given that, this is what we're allowed to do. Back to the schematic of Kay's property. Right one. Old Airport Road down here and Durant Drive. We can, with normal approval process, have a three-hundred-and-sixty-five meter road beginning at Lighthouse Road, past the house, past the parks, and have a cul-de-sac there. Period. We can go at the end of the publicly owned Durant Drive and start along Durant Drive and extend it about another fifty meters from where it already exists now. Period. So we're very limited to the southern part of Kay's property. We cannot build any further without variance approval. The next slide has a lot to it and we'll go through it probably with a lot of questions. We are proposing private access be approved for the Green Road and the Red Loop. Both accesses are building on roads that are permitted, so they're building on top of the orange roads, the ones that we can have approved. The Green Road is approximately five-hundred meters, begins at the west end of Durant Drive, heads north and becomes a connector to what we have as the Red Loop. The Red Loop is approximately sixteen-hundred meters in total, begins at the west end of Durant Drive, north, northeast and then south on Old Airport Road. You can veer right onto Boss Way or carry on down Old Airport Road. What we are requesting are variances for the Green Road and the Red Loop. And the idea to have the variances is to increase our accessibility to portions of the property that we can't access now. So we have no road access to the north or to the east. Nor do we have any access to prime building lots around the Green Road, which is a little north of Durant Drive. So that's our ask is variance approval. And this is where Chris had suggested we come and meet with you folks to see what your thoughts were. I'll leave this map up, but the next slide is questions, so. Are there any questions that we can entertain?
Questions?
Karen, did Judy say whether or not our local PAC or government can vary a provincial, because this is, the three-sixty-five is a provincial rule, correct?
Yes, from what I understand, yes.
Did she indicate whether or not we can vary that provincial rule?
What she said when we talked about, when we presented this to her was the Grammeran PAC would be the one to approve variances. So that's what we're going on.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, kind of, but I'm just, I'm surprised because our local PAC would vary local rules. I'm just wondering whether or not we can vary provincial government rules.
I see. I think that we'll have to, you and I will have to talk to Judy about that. I do know there were some differences. For instance, Grammeran has twenty-meter wide roads. However, the provincial standard's twenty-four meters. But for Grammeran, for our planning purposes, we put twenty-four in case they happen to change in the next few years. So there's things like that that do differ between the province and Grammeran, so that would be a question.
Councilor Sturgeon, you would lean forward?
I think to be clear, I think the twenty meters that you're talking of is right away, that does actually mean actual surface area, I don't think.
Correct. So you have to survey in twenty meters.
Yes.
And your five-meter easement for power and so.
And so now the provincial's upgraded to twenty-four. The original question I was going to have, cul-de-sac, I assume that's a turning area?
Turnaround, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Is there anything that would have been considered? Maybe the rules doesn't allow for this, I guess, but just having a cul-de-sac every three-hundred-and-sixty-five meters?
We've asked.
We've asked, yeah.
So what we asked was, so I'll just take the cursor for here. So down at the corner, Lighthouse Road and Old Airport Road, we thought, okay, well, there's a cul-de-sac. Can we build a cul-de-sac to the east? No. We're only allowed three-hundred-and-sixty-five meters from a public road. Can we build, because Durant Drive is legacyed in to here, could we build three-hundred-and-sixty-five meters up and over? No, because we're already at three-hundred-and-fifteen meters for the blue portion, so we can only add fifty meters. So we did ask that question. Is that the answer?
It is an answer, but I also remember talking to a former MLA, Eric Alaby, twenty years ago, on another subject matter. And he said that you can ask, you can ask for a lieutenant governor's order in council for, you know, for something that's, anyway, for, you know, for it to be a change to bypass basically the provincial standards. And I thought, oh, lieutenant governor, that's pretty cool. He gets involved or she gets involved, whoever the person may be. But then it turned out to be, it was just a fancy way of saying that cabinet can approve it, I guess, basically. And of course, that would probably, if we wanted to go that route or neededly, I suppose council could put a letter to that effect, I guess, so. That's how it was then. I don't know if that's the way it is now or not.
We presented this to Judy on Valentine's Day, actually. And that's where we learned we can't build cul-de-sacs off cul-de-sacs. But we can double check.
I think Judy's our expert, her and Alex there. And I think that we need clarification because if PAC can look at it, that would be the first step, I think. And make sure that we have, we know what we, what they need, make sure they have the information that they need before we start down the road. Councilor Boyd, did you lean forward? You looked like you were. Do you like how I call you out like that?
Yeah, that's right. You can't notice when I'm on the TV, right? So, yeah, basically what the mayor said is if, before we take it to PAC, we have to see if that's the route because we don't want to waste your time with it if you have to go up a level. So I think that's our first step, but I think it's pretty easy, easy phone call with you two and Judy and go from there.
Okay. I think that answers the next question I was going to ask, was if anyone saw any risks with this. But I guess that goes back to Judy again.
I, I'm a little cautious to weigh too far in on it because on the chance that PAC does not submit a favorable recommendation, your next appeal is to hear to this body. So before we venture too far down the road on opinions, I think we're trying to cautiously suss out what information we can without predetermining and prejudging anything ahead of time. But I think, I think you'll, I think the PAC is a very good group and you have some of the members sitting here at the table. So you've already presented to them once.
Okay.
Is that fair? I don't know if anybody else has any questions because I don't, I don't think we want to be seen as trying to stonewall it or block it, but I think we need to make sure we're going through the correct process as well. If that's a fair way to articulate that?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, I believe councillor, former councillor Ross said to me somewhere along the line, sort of like what you're saying, that really the PAC is kind of an arms length from council so that is not conflict with each other. So good call, I think.
All right, so I'm going to leave you to talk with the CAO and Judy and Alex at the Service Commission. And I'm anxious to hear updates on how this goes.
Well, thank you.
Moving on to new business, fourteen-one is the transfer station road maintenance, Councilor Sturgeon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was approached a few weeks ago on the road maintenance to the transfer station in particular to the place out back.
CND site?
Yeah, that's it. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. The CND site in particular, you know, it's spring of the year, things, it's been a lot of heavy use. And apparently, according to the agreement, it's our duty to keep it up. The break, I did talk to the CAO about it. And he did tell me he talked to the aforementioned person that I had mentioned about it. And anyway, he gave me some information and I thought it was very good. And I just wanted to know if the CAO would share the same information as he did with me with the rest of council.
Absolutely. As I had mentioned to the concerned citizen on the condition of the road leading to the CND site, it's taken a lot of abuse. We've had a lot of material hauled up there from the Northhead Wharf project and we are continuing to haul. We're not quite finished yet, but as soon as we're done hauling, that we will fix the road.
I think a portion of the road up to the curling club has been fixed and they seem to be quite pleased with that part anyway to be fixed up, so. The next item is an update on the NV power generating station. And this is more of an information thing. You'll remember back Christmas time, January, the Clean Energy Report came out. It identified the Grammeran Generating Station as end of life and to be taken offline twenty-six, twenty-seven. We had a call in January with NV Power. I had, they were going to, we were going to talk to them every six weeks to two months. We hadn't heard from them. I finally had a call with them on April tenth. They have done, there's, I think, six of those combustion turbines similar to what we have here in the province. They have done an assessment of all of them. Hours, the condition of it is better than what was originally thought and they expect the end of life to be twenty-thirty. They're going to spend the next six months doing a risk assessment of what some of the options are. At this point, they're also this summer going to do work on some of the overhead lines that go from Saint George to Deer Island because the last few power outages, that's been where the problem has been is going across those islands to Deer Island. So they're going to do some work there. We have a placeholder in our calendar for October to regroup once they have done the risk assessment. But they were very clear when we hung up that we will require some type of energy generation on Grammeran once the generating station here goes offline, whether it's diesel or whatever it is, but there needs to be some mechanism to produce power on the island. So that's where we left it. All that to say, basically the generating station isn't going anywhere in the near future and they're working towards a plan to replace it when it is ready to go offline. So questions, Councilor Sturgeon?
Yes, just to reiterate, Madam Mayor, they reiterated that we will be having some kind of a backup system, basically.
They understood that that was the request and they are looking towards ways to deal with that because they recognize we are in a unique situation and it's as much for public safety as it is for energy generation that there is something here. So while they didn't one-hundred percent commit, they are, they are not pushing back from the table about having something here, so. Anybody else? Fourteen-three is an application for donation from the Spring League. Am I talking about that? Okay. Oh, go ahead.
So that application actually come in to me, they come in just looking for, to see if there's any funds in our recreation budget to help out with their, with their Spring League. And basically all I said was probably the best thing to do, I mean, we didn't budget for anything, so the best thing from my recommendation would be just to fill out one of these application forms for the amount that we're able to give out, the two-hundred dollars.
Questions or comments? Councilor Boyd?
Hey, just to add on to what C.R. was saying. I coached Spring League last year and so what they did in the three levels was go around and get island businesses to basically sponsor for the registrations and they all get a, you get a shirt, they return it at the end of the year, but you get a jersey or whatever. So this year, there's been so many more kids join Spring League this year that now there's more jerseys and more registrations to pay. So they thought they ordered enough last year, but there's just been a huge explosion of kids wanting to play basketball. So now they're looking for a little bit more money to get everybody registered and a T-shirt.
Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons?
How long does it run?
Councilor Green?
Just doing some quick math on that and I think it was a hundred and fifteen kids. That's just, because they had twenty, twenty and forty-seven is sixty-seven, sixty-seven. And where'd it go? Forty-eight is a hundred and fifteen kids. I think anything that's keeping a hundred and fifteen kids positively occupied is a great thing. I would make a motion that we honor all three of these applications for two-hundred dollars.
You heard the motion from Councilor Green, seconded by Councilor Greenlaw. Question? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Fourteen-four, Dark Harbor Wharf repairs, Councilor Leighton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, fellow councilors. As you all know, we've spent some time in Dark Harbor. We've made a lot of improvements to our property out there. I thank everybody for the support over the years for making those improvements. And I'd like to see just one more little thing done and that is the post that goes around the wharf replaced. I've included some pretty self-explanatory pictures of the condition of those posts. We've been back and forth with one of our primary users out there, but I guess whether, I think we should, the village should just move ahead and proceed and replace the post for safety reasons. If we can get somebody out of somebody else, that's great. But at the end of the day, we need to maintain our property out there and keep it in tip-top safe, safe uses for everybody that's out there. So I've got one quote. I really don't know who else is in the business of installing these wharf pylons. But it's a really good quote. It's a no-brainer as far as I'm concerned. And I hope council will entertain my idea and we'll move forward with replacing the posts around that wharf. If anybody has any questions.
Questions or comments? Councilor Boyd and then Councilor Green.
The wharf users, I know there's only a limited number out there, do they pay birthage, wharfage fee out there? No? Okay.
Councilor Green?
Oh, I'm hesitant to go here, but I'm going. I'm questioning if this is how, I'm not questioning it's a good project, but I'm questioning if that's, does a councillor find a project he likes, go and find a problem, find a solution, come here and say, do it? Or, you know.
Well, I'm asking.
I think we've got the, we haven't looked, we didn't budget money for this, we'd have to find money somewhere. You know.
Well, I think this should be, if it isn't already included in our asset management plan, that it should be. And I'm not sure if it is actually in our asset management plan or not.
It was not added to our asset management plan. That was one of the two important things that they forgot.
So, I mean, you're looking at liability issues. I mean, there's all kinds of possibilities that could happen. And I mean, it's. So, I mean, you're looking at liability issues, I mean, there's all kinds of possibilities that could happen, and I mean, it's, it's our piece of property, and we need to keep it maintained for the public that uses it, it's one of the most popular places that tourists go to, probably just as popular as Swallow Tail, because it's so easily accessible, and it's in dire need of some love, some, some work.
Anyone else? Counselor Boyd, and then Counselor, oh, Counselor Toll, and then Counselor Boyd.
My one, my only question is, does it have to have any reports done or permits or whatever to rebuild this or to redo this? Or is it just something you just say, yeah, okay, let's go put some pilings in, and, I mean, anything else that seems to be done around water has to have all kinds of permits and approvals and, I don't know, just wondering.
I'm not one hundred percent sure, but I believe there probably is a requirement for that. Based on my day job, there is a blanket permit for the federal harbors, but I'm not sure, like, for any piling we replace there, but I'm not sure if that would extend to private structures.
Well, I'm more than happy to, let's jump through the hoops, and if we, we need an application, we'll do it, and we'll move forward, but it's our piece of property. It's our piece of property, and I have...
Counselor Boyd, you were next on my list.
Yeah, similar to what Counselor Toll said, I was going to ask for your opinion on your day job hat, on where you thought we should go with that, because I, I, I agree it should be looked into and looked after, and it does become a liability issue. I just want to make sure we, as Jordy said, go through the right hoops and all that.
Anyone else?
I'm assuming it's something just as simple as a Wawa permit, I mean, there's, they're not disturbing any vegetation, or it's just a matter of taking a pile and putting a new one in, but that would all be explained in the Wawa. And as far as the funding goes, we've had some initial talks that the Dark Harbor outlet may not require as much maintenance this year. So if we can save a little bit on the maintenance, we may have a little bit extra in the, in the pot to possibly put here. And hats off to one of our largest users out there, they're very giving when it comes to, to projects like this, so we can have continued discussions with them as well.
My, Counselor Green?
The structural integrity of the rest of it, last year, we put, did some work on the top, and now we're looking at doing the side. Is, is the rest of it good, or is it, is there something else we should be, you know? You know, how, are we just putting a Band-Aid on a Band-Aid, or do we need to do a, you know, something substantial, or that's all?
My suggestion would be, we had talked about delineating the priorities that we had as far as infrastructure-type projects. We were thinking more on the capital borrowing side, but maybe this would fall into that type of exercise as well. I don't know if we want to go down that route, if we want to see about the funding from our user that's out there, or what the wishes of the group is for next steps. Do we want to have some more information and come back at the June meeting perhaps? On the permitting, that sort of thing? Counselor Sturgeon?
I, I kind of agree with your, with Madam Mayor, and also Counselor Greens, I mean, where, what else does it need, kind of thing? And then, you know, we're at right now, it's thirty-nine hundred and ten dollars, that's what's been given, I understand, that we can do anything up to five thousand dollars without putting the quota in there, so. I, I kind of like to have, like Counselor Leighton said, I mean, I think pretty much that's the only game in town, but still, I kind of like to have a, a little more competition, I guess, than not, I guess. Or some homework, let's put it that way.
I'll tell you, that's a good price on piling. So what's the wishes of the group? Would you like to make a motion to table this till the June meeting for some more information? Heard the motion from Counselor Greenlaw, do we have a second or? Seconded by Counselor Toll. Question?
What are we considering? What are we considering?
I, I think we would come back with more information on this general state of the structure, what the permitting required is, if there's potential funding from the user, some of that information to go with it, would be my suggestion.
That's fine.
Counselor Sturgeon?
Did you say June, Madam Mayor, or?
Or... Did I say?
Yeah, sorry. I'm behind. I feel stupid.
Are we going to take some local knowledge for their word on whether they believe that this is structural, the integrity of the structure is there, or do we need to bring in an expert to tell us that? Because I'm afraid if we bring in an expert, we've just blown thirty-nine hundred dollars we would have spent to replace the pylons.
I would think if we went out at low tide and took a real walk around and poke in it, you know, see if there's loose concrete down the sides and all that type of stuff, rocks falling out through it, I, I've been out there at high tide, I haven't been out there at low tide personally, and I'm not a structural engineer, but I think common sense would tell us if there's something there that really required a closer look, or no, put those posts in and we're good to go.
Any other questions, Counselor Sturgeon?
We do have a quasi-bill of inspector, I mean, maybe that'd be the person to take a look at it, and maybe a more qualified opinion, let's put it that way.
Well, I would say we're looking at an engineer then to come and look at it, who, who, who else is going to be that per, well, who's, who's qualified to say? Well, who would that be, I guess, my question would be?
I think we can come up with a few suggestions, and maybe we can talk about that offline, so we're not talking about people and their personal qualifications in a public forum. But I think we've had one suggestion, I've got a couple of ideas in my head of people that may be applicable, and so maybe we can take that part of it offline, but I didn't hear the need for an engineer at this point unless we get out there, and there is concern from what people are seeing when they go out. So what I understand where I think we are right now is we have a motion to table this till June, till we come back with some more information, look at the condition of the structure, permitting, potential funding partners, and then have a more fulsome discussion and make a decision there. Is that where we are? Any more questions on that motion? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Fourteen-five is a letter from Heart and Stroke, looking for a donation. That's why I have my glasses on top of my head, because I knew I'd need them for this moment. To whom it may concern, the Heart and Stroke Foundation's annual door-to-door campaign is scheduled to happen from May twenty-twenty-four to September twenty-twenty-four. The money raised during these months allows the foundation to continue funding our mission of preventing heart disease, saving lives, and promoting recovery. The Heart and Stroke Foundation is active throughout New Brunswick with programs and initiatives in schools, workplaces, and communities. We are dedicated to helping people live active and healthy lifestyles. This letter is to inform you and the council that our volunteers will be canvassing door-to-door throughout the month of May twenty-twenty-four to September twenty-four, throughout all communities in New Brunswick. If you need anything else, don't hesitate to reach out. So they apparently aren't even asking for money, which I thought they were, but if they come to your door, they'd like for you to donate, so, yes. Which I think, given some of the conversation, I'm looking at Thomas in the back, we've had about fraud and other things, it is good to know that there is a legitimate campaign going on there for heart and strokes, so that is not a bad piece of information to have. Okay, moving along, we have approval to pay invoices from the General Operating Fund. We have Island Home Hardware, the April statement is one thousand five hundred and fifty-two dollars and sixty-one cents. From Island Truck Repair, we have the Transfer Station Dump Trailer, three thousand and thirty-one dollars and ninety-four cents. MG Fisheries is the Transfer Station New Road, eight thousand five hundred and ten dollars. Emerge, which was Beers Neil for our year-end, is four thousand six hundred dollars. Dutchman Contracting for the Seal Cove Playground, six thousand and sixty-six dollars and twenty-five cents. Dutchman Contracting for Pettis' Cove, six thousand two hundred and four dollars and twenty-five cents. FFP Laser Systems for a fire department fogger, one thousand seven hundred and forty-four dollars and seventy-two cents. And UMB for our membership for three thousand seven hundred and twenty-two dollars and eighty cents.
I'd make a motion to pay these invoices from the General Operating Fund?
You heard the motion from Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons, do we have a second or? Seconded by Counselor Green. Question? Counselor Boyd?
Uh, the Dutchman work at Pettis' Cove.
That was some major storm damage after one of those high-water events that we had, actually, there was two. And we've applied for some coastal erosion money, whether we get it or not, I'm not sure, but if not, that sixty-two oh four twenty-five will be shared sixty-fourty with DTI.
Anyone else? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. From the General Capital Fund, we have Brunswick Engineering for the airport for six thousand four hundred and five dollars and fifty cents, and Brunswick Engineering for the airport extension for nineteen thousand and fifty-four dollars and forty-four cents. Heard the motion from Counselor Sturgeon, do we have a second or? Seconded by Counselor Toll. Question? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. We have two items for closed session, one is a financial for tenders, and the second is financial for Swallow Tail. Heard the motion, do we have a second or? Seconded by Counselor Boyd. All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. I'll recall this council meeting back to order from closed session, it's about five after nine, we were in closed session to talk about two items. The first one was tenders.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move that we award the cemetery mowing and general maintenance to Blades of Quarry for this year.
You heard the motion from Counselor Green, do we have a second or? Seconded by Counselor Boyd. Question? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. There's a second motion.
Okay, we also had a tender out for the trash barrels that you see along the sides of the roads and other parking areas. We had one applicant, so I move that we award that to Charles Dicky Morgan.
Heard the motion from Counselor Green, do we have a second or? Seconded by Counselor Toll. Question? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. The second item was financial for Swallow Tail, and we are going to follow up with the SKS Keepers Society to have a sit-down meeting with them to talk about some of the financial and long-term planning, just so we can enhance the partnership that we have with that group, so. With that, our next regular meeting will be June third here at the Community Center.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, everybody.